All right, good afternoon, everybody. So today I wanted to start with, and I'm not sure even if everybody's aware, that we've been doing some education around English as a second language. And we've actually hit our one-year anniversary. So we often talk about the Beverwick Way, right? So there's nothing that embodies the Beverwick Way more than this. So this was an idea that was brought forth by Mrs. Riker and Mrs. Harbison, and said, you know, I think we have an opportunity here, and I'd like to be a part of it. So since then, it's grown. So I'd like to take an opportunity just to recognize everybody that's been a part of it. So I'm going to recognize our teachers, and if you're here, I'd ask that you stand up. So do we have Mary Ann Riker? Okay, stay standing. And then also, we have Irene Harbison. No? Betty Nitski? The Gordons, Mr. and Mrs. Gordon, are you here? Yes, all right. Kate Storms, Elizabeth McMillan, and Judy Barlow. So please, a round of applause for our teachers. And then we have our students, and we have our one-year students. We have Jose. Louise, who's not here, right, Dorothy?
Louise is not here, he's on vacation, he comes back tomorrow.
Okay. Adil. Limoza. So they've been going for one year. And I'd also like to recognize that Jose most recently became a U.S. citizen. And then we have our other students, Afetta. Ramon. Kizmi. Lindita, and Skruta. So all of this, when it was proposed, you know, we met with Dorothy, and I just want to thank Dorothy for rearranging her schedule, because I know this will shock all of you, but Dorothy is very efficient in the time, in how she schedules people. So she runs a tight ship and a tight schedule, so I appreciate Dorothy in taking the time to make these adjustments to our schedule, for allowing this to happen. So I do thank you, Dorothy, very much. Not just for that, but for all of you. She is, she is.
Nice friend, good, very nice friend.
Yes. She is, she'll pay you later when you get here. But again, so, you know, this continues, it's an ongoing program, but I think it was definitely worth the recognition. We did have someone come and do a little video of the class as well. So I appreciate all your time that you guys are taking, and obviously, all the volunteers' time. So just one more round of applause. All right, thank you, anything you guys want to add? We're good, all right.
Yeah, nice people, eleven years I'm here, same old family.
And then I also, moving right along, I did want to introduce our new maintenance staff member. So we're welcoming Leighton Ashbaugh. Is that right? Okay, all right. Leighton was actually just telling me, he graduated from Gilderlin High School and lived right near Beverwick, so when he saw the Beverwick ad come up, he knew this was a place he wanted to work. So we're happy to have you.
Yeah, I'm happy to be here.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next, I'd like to welcome Linda McElroy to introduce our new residents.
Thank you, Paula. Okay, Linda McElroy, can you hear me? Yes, no, yes. I am now appearing as Karen Green. Sorry, Paula.
Okay.
All right, Karen Green was going to report on the Staff Appreciation Fund, but she has a conflict, and so she asked if I would give you some information. So I said, I will try to do my best. So as of this morning, we have $59,300 that has been collected for the fund. So just over 70% of our, I'm going to call them units, apartments, cottages, that amount. So a little over 70% contributed this year. As a reference, last year, it was 92% at the final end. So we have about a week to go, so we're hoping that we will reach that level. Karen is very good at numbers, and I will let her handle that end of it. I'm just going to speak just briefly from the heart about this. Shortly after entering Beverwick, Jim and I were in the gym, and we were talking to someone, of course, he asked, well, how are you doing? You know, getting along here? And we said, yes, we're trying to figure things out. And the comment he made that I've never forgotten was, Beverwick isn't perfect, but it's the best place to be. And that just struck me. And we've been here a little over four years now, and yes, it is a blessing to be here. I contribute a lot of that to the staff, all of you people, but it is a good place for us. I was thinking about how, when I go into restaurants, shops, stores, you know, those kinds of places, and someone is taking my money, and I wouldn't say waiting on me, that doesn't need to, but, you know, taking care of what I need. If that person smiles and treats me like a real human being, or, you know, interacts with me, I feel, wow, wasn't that amazing? And yet, I thought, that's what our staff is here all the time, all the time. So they're a blessing, and just like Paula was saying, we talk about the Beverwick Way. Without our staff, this wouldn't be the Beverwick Way. They are fundamentally important to us. So, you know, Thanksgiving's coming along. My parents always taught me to be grateful and thankful for things. Those of you who take healthy bounds know I say that every time. But it is a time to be thankful, and think about the people who are here helping us day in, day out. Last evening, Jim and I came to dinner, and it was after five. And I saw one of our Beverwick employees up here on the floor, working on things. This was after five, you know, the hours were over. And I know that person would say, it's my job. And yeah, I guess that is the person's job, but it's nice if we can show those people we appreciate what they do and how they treat us. So anyhow, we have another week to go. Next, let's see, Sunday morning, so the Sunday after Thanksgiving. Karen will take the last amount of money out of the box. That afternoon, we will sit and write the checks that go out. So I would just encourage you, if, well, I should say, first of all, if you've contributed, thank you very much, and it doesn't matter how much. We appreciate what you give. And if you haven't, then, you know, please try to do that within a week or so. Yes, Dan?
Can we have somebody go to each apartment who hasn't given yet with a gun, saying, this is a gentle reminder?
I don't think guns are allowed. But Karen, Karen has a process that she'll send out little notes, just, you know, please try to remember us, that kind of thing. So, Stan, are you a hitman? You sound like you're familiar with that sort of thing. So that was my job for Karen, and she said, please, if you have questions, talk to her about that. Are we looking for seats back there, Ray?
We need a bigger room.
All right, while we're getting seated for some of us back there, I wanted to check, has Mike Bruce come in? Is anybody's seat, is Mike here? No, evidently not, all right. Then I'm going to wait, and I'll introduce him that are next time. So we have three people I'm going to introduce to you today. So we'll ask them just to stand, and then they can be seated while I just mentioned a few things. So Barbara Stinnett is back there, Barbara, there she is, just, there's Barbara. All right, thank you, Barbara. You don't have, if you don't want to stand, you don't have to. So I'll just mention about Barbara. She lived near Clifton Park before coming to Beverwick. She owned a physician placement firm. I think that's like a dating service for physicians. You know, you could come up with where they will best fit. All right, so she did that very successfully. Then she worked for her son-in-law, who handles medical malpractice suits, which is interesting in itself, but I was, you know, to work for your son-in-law, I think that says a lot about Barbara. Anyhow, she, Barbara said she felt comfortable living here from her first night, which is something, isn't it? And an interesting thing for Barbara is that in this year, 2025, she will enjoy the birth of five great-grandchildren, and they're all girls. So special, special here for her. Okay, then I would like John and Sigrid Newell to stand, if they would please. All right. So John's home was near Boston, Sigrid hails from Iowa. I don't know if we've had, do we have anyone here from Iowa? I don't, I mean, I don't think so, so I thought that was interesting.
I lived there eighteen years.
No, well, were you born there, Chandy? Okay, doesn't count. So after their undergraduate work, they both joined the Peace Corps, which we have several other groups that have done that sort of thing. They were stationed in Ecuador, but on different parts of the country. They happened to meet at a training, and sparks flew, and two years later, they were married. Now, they have two sons, whose families live in Santa Fe and San Francisco, but they have a granddaughter here near us, Cornell. John taught at RPI and continues to volunteer assisting in physics classes at Bethlehem High School, which I think is amazing, not only for John, but for those students. So that's wonderful. Sigrid retired eight years ago from instructing online classes for Walden University. She loves nature, she's pleased to have a garden here. And another interesting thing about them, if anyone, and I bet almost everyone sitting here, was at the concert last week, where we had the Tamaki's son and daughter-in-law here? I mean, it was an amazing, amazing concert. Well, you may have noticed, John introduced them. And I bet a lot of people wondered, who is he? Why is this new guy there? And what's the connection? And when you eat dinner with them, you will learn a lot more. But they were instrumental in Hikaru. Am I saying it correctly? Hikaru? Hakaru, that's right, Hakaru. Very instrumental in Hakaru's adult life, and many parts of this. Through Hakaru, they met the Tamaki's. So Donna and Yasuyuki became friends with them. And when the Tamaki's who were in Maine thought they would like to live closer to their son, the Newells were instrumental in saying, check out Beverwick. So the Tamaki's came to Beverwick, and now the Newells are here at Beverwick, and the Tamaki's are their greeters. Isn't that great? So you never know how life unfolds for any of us. So that's, that's my spiel today. All right, and we will catch up with Mike Bruce. We will get after him and see why he was late for the smoke.
Thank you so much. Linda LaClare has a quick announcement about Ideas Today.
Thank you. Tonight's Ideas Today program is going to feature Michael Clarke, who is the Executive Director of the Irish-American Heritage Museum in Albany, downtown. And Michael is a great guy, but it's taken me a little bit of a while to get a blurb from him to describe his program. So what he is going to do is talk about heritage, how our family heritage, he's a first-generation American, his parents came from Ireland, and many of us have had similar experiences. And he is going to talk about how heritage is something that shapes us and is important to share with other people, how it really is part of our whole environment, or it should be. And he's going to play some music as part of it. So there's room in this room for all of you, so please come. Thank you.
Next, we have Phyllis Bader Burrell, an announcement about the Heart Review.
Can everyone hear me from right here?
All right.
You are all invited. Put it on your calendar, December ninth at 7:15 in this room, we are launching the third edition of the Heart Review. And maybe there's some people here, brand-new, who don't know what the Heart Review is. This is a journal that we have produced for three years now, of art, photography, prose, and poetry, and pictures of crafts, all done by people here at Beverwick. It's a beautiful journal, this is the third year, and you're invited to a party. December the ninth at 7:15 in this room. We have to sell all the copies so we can do production with the journal. So everybody come. Everyone who has something in the journal, 50 people are in this journal, with more, one or more few things, get a free copy. So because of that, we have to sell many copies so that we can pay back Beverwick, or wherever the money comes from. So please come, put it on your calendar. Oh, okay, you don't have to bring any money to the party. Anything that you buy will be put on your Beverwick bill. Oh, and we'll have a slideshow of photographs and paintings, and we'll have, we don't know yet, but wonderful drinks and food. So please come, please come. December ninth, 7:15 in this room.
December ninth, 7:15. All right. Next up, we have Todd Wing, who's going to do a presentation on the train.
This is the second part.
Give us the microphone, please.
This is the second, this is the second part of a self-commissioned documentary of the rehabbing of the Beverwick Railroad. And it's only seven and a half minutes long.
Thank you.
That was great, and that's another Beverwick tradition kept alive by all of you. So thank you for all you guys are doing to keep that alive. And so we'll have the big unveiling on December 1st, so everybody come, and we'll see everything, and the fruits of everybody's labor unveiled on December 1st. So thank you all. Cory, I have you up next.
No.
No? Do you have a presentation you want me to talk about?
I just, yeah, come on. It's just the scam. I need about four days where I don't have to talk. Thank you. All right, scam of the month. It's that time of the year, right? Our COLA increases are coming in January. So, and this has been a scam that's been around since about 2021. But just as a reminder, scammers, you know, obviously, they're thinking faster and ahead of it more than we are. They're changing their pitches, they're changing their wording. But they are trying to, you know, get that additional 2.8% that's coming for 2026. So they can come in the form of an email, a text message, a physical letter that you may get. But basically, they're asking you to authorize giving them $100, and that way, they will ensure that you are getting your increase. So what to do, if it's an email, a text message, ignore it, delete it, share it with your friends, and say, can you believe this? Don't fall for it. And you can report, you know, different texts or emails that you get. COLA's automatic, you don't need to buy into it, you don't need to give anybody any of your information to approve it. So there is no need to take action, it's just going to come around when it comes around. Any questions? Okay. What else?
Our guest.
Our guest, oh, please. So Paula asked me, it was kind of in the memo, and I'll be honest, it wasn't like a real strong answer.
And how's movie?
Corey?
Yes.
Question about VPNs.
Yes.
Do you have to have the Ethernet connection, which isn't available in some areas?
The internet connection not available?
Not going through the modem that's in like a cottage, for example, and I understand there is no Ethernet network out to most of the cottages and.
Oh, Ethernet.
Yeah.
So, a VPN would work on the Wi-Fi. It would be those personal routers that are only really available to people who live in the New North apartments and the newer cottages at Beverwick. That's really the only place that's hardwired, that they could use those. Other people would have to use a virtual private network, which is, excuse me, is, I think the last couple that I've been doing Norton VPN, if you pay for a year, it comes out to like $2.50 a month, so. Yes?
I just wanted to mention, instead of $100 for activating a COLA, I only charge 50.
Okay. I will let people know that.
Come in Monday.
Okay. So, the other thing I want to mention is, we also found out last week that as of December 1st, Steve Grinder, the other IT person, is being redistributed to hospitals, settings and everything, so he will no longer be helping residents. Like I said, there is a memo going out. So, now, I am your only IT support for five communities. So, so I'm getting a big old raise. Kathy just found that out, no. So, it will be in the memo as well and everything, so. And I did say that I really want to thank Steve because, obviously, coming from, you know, the activities background into the IT background, he was a big help to me and having me, you know, navigate certain things within the system, so that was great. Also, on Monday, when I was here, Spectrum was here again and finally swapped out our insertion gear that was causing all the issues with our in-house movie setup. So, on Monday afternoon, I have an appointment with Uniguest to get the in-house movie system set back up, so that hopefully, we can start showing movies on 3.1 again. Any other questions for me? Okay.
All right, don't go far, I'm injured.
Okay, can't go far, Paula needs my help.
Switch laptops again, number three. See, yeah, it's always my idea.
How you'd have to do.
I gotta go sometime with my display.
Yep.
And right now, it's pretty scary. And then over here on the display, right?
Extend, yeah, press the question mark. Extend. Yep. Actually, if you go here and there.
Yep.
Go, settings.
Just press the button.
Display, yep. And do, activate.
I did extend.
Now, keep these changes. Did you hit?
I did extend because, yeah, you're up, because you have two screens.
Yeah, but extend usually then.
Keep changes, no, keep changes, right?
No, because extend is gonna put it so it looks like two monitors.
Here, you want mine?
Because it was on.
Here you go.
No, all right, so now we've lost everything.
Here you go.
All right, let's do that.
There we go.
Yay, thank you Kathy and Corey. All right, so as promised, we wanted to review the results for the resident satisfaction survey. I can tell you this week, we've been meeting, we've had two meetings with each department going over these results, as well as reviewing the comments, the positive comments, the negative comments, each department developing a goal to be working on based on your review. So, I'm just gonna go through the results and then periodically throughout the year, we'll report on our progress towards improvements. So, the response rate was great. In 2025, we went from 82% to 89%. So, likelihood of referring Beverwick to others, again, most of our areas, we went up slightly, some we stayed the same. So, when you have a percentage there, it's the top two responses, right Kathy, the top?
Just based out of five, 4.16.
Based out of five, okay. So, so again, just as a reminder, it's out of five, so we went raised slightly for likelihood to recommend. Overall satisfaction with the community, again, up slightly. Activities, we asked about variety and quality, and then suggestions and ideas are considered. So, we did see a bigger jump here for variety and quality, and then suggestions considered, 3.8. And I do realize we have a, we had a change in this position, so I'm hoping to see that some of this positive changes continue and hope to see the same results next year as well. Wellness, variety, so wellness dipped a little bit, but not, you know, a significant amount, but still, you know, this is out of five, so 4.38 is very good. And then, knowledge of fitness instructor as well was good. Satisfaction with, okay, so dining, so there's a couple, so satisfaction with menu options, satisfaction with food presentation, and then the timeliness of service. So, all up a little bit. But again, we reviewed with dining, and there's a couple other things with that. responsiveness to requests, up a little bit, comments and suggestions are considered, up a little bit, and then accuracy of meal deliveries and takeout. So, with dining, the one area I can just give, for example, that I recommend they focus on, based on your comments, was temperature. So, what, you know, things, what processes can we put into place, what can we measure to try and improve the temperature, because that seemed to be a recurring theme with dining, that it's served too cold. And there are a lot of reasons, and I know at the Food Committee, buddies talked about it a little bit, but then we have to figure out what we can do about that. Housekeeping, so again, we looked at three different areas with housekeeping, the cleaning of the apartment, cleanliness of the community, and satisfaction with public laundry facilities. So, again, with all of these, there was usually one or two comments we could also go by as well. Maintenance, satisfaction, overall maintenance of the community, so up a little bit, overall condition of the grounds and outside amenities, again, up slightly. I know one of the areas that we've talked about in this meeting, as well as the meetings that we've had, is really improving the process flow with the work orders, and not necessarily the work orders being completed, but the communication around that completion. So, I know there's a few things that Fred talked about at this meeting last month that he was gonna start, so that's something that we're measuring, and we meet monthly to review these goals and make sure we're on track. So, work orders is on here, although up slightly, something that we felt with the comments that we received, that an area that still needed attention. And the communication piece is what we've talked about. So, management opportunities to provide ideas, up a little bit, and then effectiveness of management, up a little bit. So, based on some of the, some of the comments that I received, based on this section, is gonna be more about communication and making sure that I'm communicating what I need to the staff, and then also the communication out to you, so some goals focused around that. And then also, some of the comments were about presence, presence within the community, so just putting in some efforts for that as well. Reception, so reception was, stayed the same, but at 4.59, that's pretty good. So, I know that Kathy works with her team, and I know that she has areas that she focuses on, even at a 4.59, still room for improvement, and she works with her team to do that. Resident service advisor went up, and again, I realize this is a change in position, so we're hoping to see that those services remain high and the satisfaction remains high. Finance, so accuracy of billing and efficiency in resolving billing issues, you know, that went up slightly with the accuracy of billing, efficiency in resolving issues went down, but we recognize this as an area of improvement, and we do, you know, work with them to try and develop systems to resolve things quickly. Marketing, so accuracy with, which marketing represents the community, so we did talk a little bit about this and trying to form some, just some general marketing approaches, but working with perhaps small groups of residents to try and figure, to figure out the best way to go about that. So, more to come with that. Security, the degree to which you feel safe, and then the response time, safety stayed the same, response time is down a little bit. So, we have a lot of processes with security that we're looking at as well and making sure those flippers are done, and so a lot of processes that we can audit along the way to make sure. So, that's something that Fred and I are working on as well, to keep track on some of those things, which again, then, I think would affect the degree to which you feel safe and as well as timeliness of response. So, tech support, up a little bit. Internet is down. I'm shocked.
All right, yay, thank you Kathy, and Cory.
Yeah.
All right, so as promised, uh, we wanted to review the, um, results for the resident satisfaction survey. Uh, I can tell you this week, we've been meeting, we've had two meetings with each department going over these results, as well as reviewing the comments, the positive comments, the negative comments. Each department developing a goal, um, to be working on based on your, uh, review. So, I'm just gonna go through the results and then periodically throughout the year, we'll report on our progress towards improvements. So the response rate was great, um, in 2025, we went from eighty-two, um, percent to eighty-nine percent. Uh, so likelihood of referring Beverwick to others, again, most of our areas we went up, uh, slightly, some we stayed the same. So when you have a percentage there, it's the top two responses, right Kathy, the top?
It's just based out of five, four point one six.
Based out of five, okay. So, uh, so again, just as a reminder, it's out of five, so we went, um, raised slightly for likelihood to recommend. Overall satisfaction with the community, again, up slightly. Um, activities, we asked about variety and quality, and then, um, suggestions and ideas are considered. Um, so we did see a, a bigger jump here for variety and quality, and then, um, suggestions considered, three point eight. And I do realize we have a, we had a change in this position, so, um, I'm hoping to see that some of this positive changes continue. Um, and hope to see the same results next year as well. Um, wellness, variety, so wellness dipped a little bit, but not, you know, a significant amount, but still, you know, this is out of five, so four point three eight's very good. Um, and then knowledge of fitness instructor as well was good. Um, satisfaction with, okay, so dining, so there's a couple, so satisfaction with menu options, satisfaction with food presentation, and then the timeliness of service. Um, so all up a little bit. Um, but again, we reviewed with dining, and there's a couple other things with that. responsiveness to request, um, up a little bit, comments and suggestions are considered, up a little bit, and then accuracy of meal deliveries and takeout. Um, so with dining, the one area I can just give, for example, that I recommend they focus on, based on your comments, was temperature. So what, um, you know, things, what processes can we put into place, what can we measure, um, to try and improve the temperature, cause that seemed to be, um, a recurring theme with dining, that it's served too cold. And there are a lot of reasons, and I know at the food committee, buddies talked about it a little bit, um, but then we have to figure out what we can do about that. Uh, housekeeping, so again, we looked at three different areas with housekeeping, the cleaning of the apartment, uh, cleanliness, uh, of the community, and satisfaction with public laundry facilities. Um, so again, with all of these, there was usually one or two comments we could also go by as well. Uh, maintenance, satisfaction overall maintenance of the community, so up a little bit. Overall condition of the grounds and outside amenities, again, up slightly. Um, I know one of the areas that we've talked about in this meeting, as well as the meetings that we've had, is really improving the, um, process flow with the work orders. Um, and not necessarily the work orders being completed, but the communication around that completion. So I know there's a, a few things that Fred talked about at this meeting last month that he was gonna start. Um, so that's something that we're measuring, and we, we meet monthly, um, to review these goals and make sure we're on track. Um, so work orders is on here, um, although up slightly, something that we felt with the comments that we received, um, that an area that still needed attention. Um, and the communication piece is what we've talked about. So management opportunities to provide ideas up a little bit, and then effectiveness of management up a little bit. Um, so based on some of the, uh, some of the comments that I received, um, based on thi- this, uh, section, w- is gonna be more about, um, communication and making sure that, um, I'm communicating what I need to the staff, and then also the communication out to you, so some goals focused around that. And then also, um, some of the comments were about presence, presence within the community, so just putting in some efforts for that as well. Uh, reception, so reception was stayed the same, but at four point five nine, that's pretty good. Um, so I know that, um, Kathy works with her team, and, um, I know that she has areas that she focuses on, even at a four point five nine, still room for improvement, and she works with her team to do that. Uh, resident service advisor, um, went up, and again, I realize this is a, a change in position, so we're hoping to see that those services remain high and the satisfaction remains high. Finance, so accuracy of billing and efficiency in resolving billing issues. Um, you know, the, the, went up slightly with the accuracy of billing, efficiency in resolving issues went down. Um, but we recognize this as an area of improvement, um, and we do, you know, work with them to try and develop systems to resolve things quickly. Marketing, so accuracy with, which marketing, um, represents the community, so we did talk a little bit about this, and, um, trying to form some, just some general marketing approaches, um, but working with perhaps small groups of residents to try and figure, uh, to figure out the best way to, um, go about that. So more to come with that. Security, the degree to which you feel safe, and then the response time, um, safety stayed the same, response time is down a little bit. Um, so we have a lot of processes with security that we're looking at as well, and making sure those flippers are done, and, um, so a lot of, uh, processes that we can audit along the way to make sure. So that's something that Fred and I are working on as well, to keep track on some of those things, which again, then, um, I think would affect the degree to which you feel safe, and as well as timeliness of response. Um, so tech support up a little bit, uh, internet is down, I'm shocked. So, phone was down a little bit, so these are the areas that, um, scored the lowest, uh, last time, and then also scored the lowest this time as well. Um, so, I can tell you that again, Beverwick is not alone in scoring low on this. Every senior living community scored low on this. Um, so I have brought this up to, I mean, we've done what we can on our end to do some research, get it out there, say here's what's available. Um, so although it seems to be moving at a snail's pace, it is being heard, so right now I don't have any plans, I don't know of any plans of us to make a switch. Um, but it is something that, um, we are discussing at a divisional level at just about every meeting I attend, so. Um, stay tuned. Transportation, um, so availability, timeliness, cleanliness, and driver habits, um, is something that we're looking at. And so with transportation, the two things that we track from a quality perspective are timeliness. So if people are waiting, what are the wait times? We've put some new things in place in the past couple of months, um, to get a better handle on that. And then the other thing that we track is denials. If we're denying anybody transportation, what's the reason, um, and, and what can we do about that, if anything? And then just our general amenities here. Um, but basically, I don't see anything that changed drastically. Um, outdoor amenities went up, maybe we, cause we got the shuffleboard table, or the shuffleboard court back. Um, but about the same, and then some comments, again, like I said, we went into more detail about the comments, about what we're doing well. Um, and I know that, that's hard to see, but, um, and then areas for improvement, again, that's what we looked at along with the scores. So, like I said, that is, um, that, that's the results, so I just wanted to let you know, I mean, an eighty-nine response rate is fabulous, so I thank you all for taking the time to complete the survey. And I just want you to know that it is something that we do look at, so you didn't complete it for, um, no reason. We really do look at it and try and improve our processes. Some of it we can do right here at Beverwick, some of it we can't. Um, but still, nonetheless, I do appreciate it, and we will report out as to what our specific goals are and how we're doing in meeting those. Any questions on survey? Yes?
I'm just curious why food comes out where your meat is hot, vegetable is cold, it's not like the whole plate is cold. Why some things are hot and some are cold on the same plate?
So, um, that'd be a good question for dining to be here, but that's something, uh, the question, if you couldn't hear, sometimes the meat's hot and the vegetables are cold, so why would it be one's hot, one's cold? I don't know if it holds the temp longer, um, but we've talked about a couple of different things with dining, even about the covers that go on the plate, the plates are cold, can we warm the plates? So a lot that, um, that I think there's room to improve, yeah.
Is, is this available, uh, in hard copy, especially the last two pages?
Yes, were the comments included too? Yes, so copies are available at the front desk. Anything else? Okay, um, a wellness update, Terry's on vacation, but, um, I'm reporting for her to let you know that new fitness equipment is arriving Monday, December second. Um, December, oh, I don't, it says December second, so it will either be that Monday or Tuesday, I'll find out. Um, and the fitness center will be closed on that day, while they switch out the equipment, take out the old, bring in the new. Um, let's see what else, orientation for the new equipment will be offered, days and times to be posted untouched, Tim. It will also be posted next to the fitness center. A couple other announcements I just wanted to bring up, um, if you do, we've been talking about at resident council, ways that we can reduce, um, our plastic use. So if you do have a container and you do anticipate that you will have to go items from lunch or dinner, please bring down your own container, um, so dining will not be using, um, plastics for that. I wanna thank you all for your donations to the food pantry as well, we did receive a lot. And, um, just one announcement too, there has been some plants that were left hanging plants in the north, between New North, Old North, New North. Um, if somebody does not claim them, that we will dispose of them, so if they're yours, if you could take them back, that would be great. And a couple of other items, so, uh, we did have, uh, fire safety, we did upload the video, correct? The video, we did, um, upload the video, and, uh, we did send out a form as to, um, if some, if we needed to evacuate, would you have someplace to go? So we sent out that form, asked everybody to fill it out, what we've gotten back so far is about a hundred people would need someplace to go. Um, so that's good information to have, we're gonna incorporate that into new residents moving in, so that's gonna be part of, um, the information that we gather then, so we have just a running tally. And I realize that, you know, that number's not set in stone, you might think you have a place to go, and for whatever reason, that place isn't available to you, but it helps gives, give us a sense of the resources that we might need, either from St. Peters or from the town of Bethlehem. So, um, I hope you all attended the, the meeting, I thought it was great, by the fire department, um, so if not, the video is there. Um, as was noted, the generator work has started, um, with one big snafu already, so. But it has started, it's going well, I believe most of the underground work is done?
Most of the underground was, but that's because of the delay from today's cut. Uh, there's some that's gonna be done tomorrow, the underwork will be done tomorrow, and then it starts to pads.
Okay, so the underground work will be completed tomorrow, then they'll start laying?
No cottages are all done.
Laying concrete for pads?
Correct.
Okay. We are gonna be receiving, uh, a new bus, so that bus is gonna be coming two weeks, um, so.
Delay on the seats.
Yeah. So just a delay on the seats, the bus came with vinyl seats, we wanted cloth, so we had to wait for the cloth seats, um, but it'll be coming soon. And those are all my updates, if you guys have any questions. Yeah, all the way in the back. Chanley, yeah?
I see Steve standing up, and I was seated on somebody's roller chair on Friday night. Kurt Gordon stood up for the whole concert, is there any way we can get any more seats in here?
So, yeah, do you know the capacity in the room?
No, I can find out.
We do.
We do.
It's on the function form, I'll tell you.
Yes. So the question was about more seating in the concerts, I know when it's a really popular one, it is, it is jam packed in here. Um, so safety becomes an issue, I don't know that, um, I, I think we're setting up all that we can set up for this room.
Hundred chairs in seventy-five capacity.
Yeah.
The capacity is a hundred.
Capacity is a hundred.
So our capacity is a hundred. I would say we have more than a hundred in events, certainly, I mean, more than a hundred chairs set up, I've seen in some of the events, but, um, I don't, I'm not the one saying, I'm not sure, but, um, but I think we're squeezing all that we can in here, and safely, it's probably not that safe actually, but, yeah.
Well, people keep squeezing in, whether they have a chair or not.
Yeah.
So it would be nice if they were able to sit, then if there was a needing to rush out, they're not keeping the other people.
Stand up.
Yeah.
Plus all the mobility devices.
Yes. That's what causes, um,
It's a real safety.
Some of the safety issues with mobility devices, yes, and getting in and out and around them, yeah. Yeah.
We're also getting requests to make our aisles wider.
I think we need a separate discussion on this.
Yeah, I, I would say let's, let's bring that up, because we would have to figure out what we wanna do. I mean, one option would be, we shut the doors and nobody else can come in or out. Well, you can go out, we'll not come in. So, but I think you're right, I think this isn't something we're gonna solve right now, but, uh, we'll, we'll discuss that. Yep. Any other questions? Yes?
Will there be a clothing drive this year, this winter?
Uh, I don't know if we have one scheduled, uh, the question is, will there be a clothing drive this winter? I'll talk to Sarah and see if we can get that on the calendar, there's no reason that we couldn't, and I thought we just did one though. Yeah. Okay. Okay. So, so what I'm hearing up here is that we just did one in fall, and then the next one would be spring. Okay, so we will do one in spring. Yeah. Yes? Um, the question was about Red Cross blood drive, we can look into that. If we have someone. All right. Anything else? Are we ready for a joke? All right. So, Johnny decided to go skiing with his buddy Bob, so they loaded up Johnny's minivan and headed north. After driving for a few hours, they got into a terrible blizzard. They pulled into a nearby farm and asked the attractive lady who answered the door if they could spend the night. "I realize the weather is awful out there, and I have this huge house all to myself. Since I'm recently widowed, she said, I'd be afraid of what the neighbors might say." "Don't worry, Johnny," said, "we'll be happy to sleep in the barn, and if the weather breaks, we'll be gone before dawn." The lady agreed, and the two men headed to the barn and settled in for the night. Come morning, the weather had cleared, so they went on their way to go skiing. About nine months later, Johnny received a letter from an attorney, and it took him a few minutes to figure it out, but he finally realized it was from the lawyer of the attractive woman at the farm. "Bob, do you remember going to the good-looking woman from the farm that we stayed at about nine months ago?" Bob said, "Yes, I do." "Did you happen to get up in the middle of the night and go into the house and pay her a visit?" "Well, yes," Bob admitted, a little embarrassed, "I have to confess that I did." "And did you happen to give her my name instead of yours?" Bob's face turned bright red, he said, "Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm afraid, uh, I'm afraid I did." "Why are you asking?" "Well," Johnny said, "because she just died and left me everything." Thank you guys, have a good afternoon, and have a happy, safe, healthy Thanksgiving if I don't see you before.